Okay, we're now live and recording so we can begin. Thank you.
Great. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Operations Committee of the ByState Board to order at 8:30 on Friday, January 26, 2024. Myra, will you call the role, please?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Golladay. Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings.
Present.
Great, thanks very much. I'd like to turn it over to Talby Roach, CEO, for an introduction of a new commissioner.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Winmiller, and good morning, everyone. So, part of a good, healthy organization is a nice, evolving Board of Commissioners, and we have that. So I have the pleasure of introducing to you all. We are in a post-pandemic world, so it looks like you all will be meeting virtually this morning, but I did have the pleasure of sitting down with our new Commissioner, Dr. Andrea Jackson Jennings, and I asked her just to be sure she is good with Commissioner AJ. So I want to be sure to welcome you warmly, Commissioner. This is the guiding light essentially to this institution, and we really do appreciate all of the time and effort that the Board of Commissioners do provide. That includes hard questions, easy questions. We take all comers. So I really do appreciate that, and I just want to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners and give your colleagues the opportunity just to say hello and good morning.
Good morning, and thank you so much for that warm reception. Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner. Glad you could join us this morning and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Look forward to meeting you, too.
Yes. Welcome aboard. I think you'll find it interesting. We have a good group of Commissioners, and we really appreciate your expertise that can help us out.
Good morning. Thank you all.
Well, thanks so much for joining us today, both Commissioners, staff, and those who are joining virtually. I would like now to turn to the third item on the agenda, which is a report on any public comments that were received.
Yes, Chair, the agency received eight public comments for today's meeting. All of the comments were distributed to the Board and to staff prior to the meeting today. The comments in their entirety will be incorporated into the online meeting materials and will be included in the minutes from today's meeting.
Thank you, Myra. The next item is approval of the minutes of the October 13, 2023 Operations Committee Open Meeting. The meeting minutes have been provided to all of you in your board packet for review. If there are no changes or edits, a motion is needed to approve.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. Contract award for uniform rental and cleaning, and I think Tom Curran has some comments for us on this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a proposal to allow the President and CEO to enter into a contract with Clean Uniform for the provision of uniform rental and cleaning for Maintenance Department staff at six ByState facilities. In August of 2023, ByState issued a solicitation for procurement of uniform and shop towel rentals, as well as weekly laundry services for Metro's Maintenance Department and supervisory staff at our bus and light rail facilities. This includes shirts, pants, jackets, and coveralls for 504 union employees and 68 supervisors. The solicitation was advertised through our iSupplier portal. In response to the solicitation, two proposals were received, one from Cintas and one from Clean Uniform. The proposals were evaluated by a committee of Metro team members from our main shop and ByState's Quality Assurance and Quality Control Department. Proposals were ranked based on the organization's background, references, staffing, and qualifications for garment management. The Clean Uniform and Cintas proposals were scored for both technical responsiveness and cost, and based on the combined scores, Clean Uniform was the highest ranking firm. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the President and CEO be authorized to enter into a five-year contract with Clean Uniform for the provision of uniforms, towel, and cleaning services in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,292,538.25, and funding will be provided through federal funds with a local match. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
More moves?
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The next item is the sole source contract. I'm sorry, the contract modification for the track system upgrade, and again, I will turn to Tom Curran for comments.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of a contract modification to our existing MetroLink Track Systems Upgrade Contract with Railworks Track Services to make improvements to three light rail grade crossings in Illinois. In September of 2023, the Board of Commissioners approved modification of a contract with Railworks Track Services for additional light rail track improvements. At that time, improvements to three grade crossings in East St. Louis were not included because St. Clair County Transit District had not yet approved the upgrades, and FTA had not yet issued an opinion on the level of environmental review that was necessary for this project. On December 7, FTA notified Metro that the East St. Louis Grade Crossings Project met the criteria for a categorical exclusion from additional environmental review. St. Clair County Transit District has also now provided its approval for the upgrades. These light rail grade crossings at Main Street, Fourth Street, and Broadway Avenue in East St. Louis were installed in the original Phase 1 MetroLink construction in 1993. Their condition has fallen to Category 2 or below according to FTA's Condition Assessment calculations, which means that the crossings are either in marginal or poor condition. Funding for their improvement will be provided from FTA grants, Proposition M, and a local match from St. Clair County Transit District. Management recommends that the Operations Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners this request to authorize the President and CEO to modify our existing contract with Railworks Track Services to include improvements to these three grade crossings in East St. Louis in a total not-to-exceed amount of $6,546,384.92. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom?
Just for clarity, the three grade crossings add $1.79 million to the cost of the existing contract, and that table is shown in your briefing paper.
Tom, this is scheduled to begin in the spring. How long? Do you know how long it'll take?
This contract currently runs through this year, and the way that the work is anticipated, it should be completed by summer, I believe. I'm not sure if Brian Sellers may be here. Yes, he is available for any technical questions. Mr. Sellers, could you help answer the Commissioner's question, please?
Yes, ideally, we could have the crossings installed by the end of summer with the rest of the contract work being completed by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
More moves?
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Thanks, Tom. The next item is the sole source contract for the automatic passenger counting infrastructure upgrades, and I think this is Chuck Stewart and Jessica Gershman.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome. Commissioner Jackson Jennings, I have before you a request for a sole source contract with Innit Innovations and Transportation Incorporated to replace obsolete automatic passenger counting system. So we've been doing business with Innit for 20 years. We use their equipment on our LRVs. They are the source of our ridership information and that type of thing. We have reached a point where we are no longer able to repair and replace parts. Many of the parts are now obsolete, so we need to enter into a contract to replace this system. The cost of that replacement is $1.2 million, and we are asking for this committee to approve and move forward to the Board of Commissioners a contract with Innit for replacement of automatic passenger transportation infrastructure for MetroLink light rail vehicles in amount not to exceed $1.2 million. Funding for this is from federal state-of-good repair funds, 80%, and a 20% local match. We cannot bridge the gap between our current LRVs and our new order of LRVs without replacing this equipment. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I just have one, quick one. I don't know, Chuck, if it's for you or for Jessica, but how accurate are these sensors in terms of passenger counts?
They're accurate when they work. You know, we've had a number of issues, especially during this past year, when we've had them down on various vehicles at various times. We've been kind of able to interpolate and kind of find the data in different ways, but they are our basic source of passenger count.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is item number eight, the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Illinois Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, the master agreement, and I think this is Mary Lamie.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are requesting a recommendation to refer to the Board of Commissioners for approval and authorization for the President and CEO to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, MABUS, for mutual aid in fire protection, suppression, emergency medical assistance, hazardous materials control, and any other emergency support for the protection of life and property in the event of an emergency at the St. Louis Downtown Airport. MABUS is in partnership with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. Their executive board has requested all members have a resolution passed by their governing authority to adopt the updated MABUS agreement. It's designed to address the growing number of members and meet all of their interstate statutes. It's important that the airport continues to receive the mutual aid services to protect the life and property of its users, and in the event of an emergency on or at the airport, and there is no cost associated with the agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have commented, it's a very good organization. We deal with them on a daily basis, so I would highly recommend that the airport become a member of this, because we never know when we're going to need that extra mutual aid from around the region.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next item is the Intergovernmental Agreement for the USDA Agreement for Airport Wildlife Services and Compliance, and again, I'll ask Mary Lamie for comments.
Okay, so we are requesting a recommendation to refer to the Board of Commissioners for approval and authorization for the President and CEO to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the USDA for Operational Wildlife Hazard Management Services. This complies with the FAA Part 139 Airport Safety Regulations at the St. Louis Downtown Airport, and there are two options for us to comply with this regulation. The first one is we hire a consultant who prepares an assessment report. This study would take one year to prepare, and is valid for five years. Estimated cost is about $75,000. This option would also require the airport to conduct inspections, reporting, maintaining permits, and hiring a wildlife biologist to perform annual training and wildlife hazard mitigation plan review. Total cost for this is $84,000 over five years, and then after that five years, we would have to hire a consultant to update that report. The second option, and this is the recommended option, and that is to enter into an agreement with the USDA to perform ongoing wildlife management services. The wildlife hazard assessment report would not be required with this option. USDA would assign a biologist to the airport and perform ongoing daytime and nighttime wildlife surveys on a monthly and a quarterly basis. The USDA biologist would also provide the airport with technical assistance and recommendations. They'd help prepare the permits. They would also manage the problem wildlife challenges. They would update the airport's FAA-approved wildlife hazard management plan as needed. They would also be responsible for training and the plan review, and provide all of the necessary documents to FAA for their safety inspections. Cost for this is a renewable agreement for three years, $44,225, and the estimated cost over five years is $75,000. So entering into the agreement with USDA is, from an operational and efficiency perspective, and fiscal responsibility is a better option. A majority of the FAA compliance requirements are transferred to the USDA at a cost no greater than if the airport and ByState Development took on those responsibilities, and additionally, USDA is able to perform more responsibilities than the airport staff is qualified to, including regular surveying and active wildlife control. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Other questions for Mary?
No, Mary. Good work. That was a really thorough analysis. Bravo.
It's interesting stuff, so thank you.
And I might add, as she, as Mary stated, Part 139 is the FAA section dealing with scheduled service airports, airports that can fly passengers. The major airports throughout the country are Part 139 certified, all have to have this wildlife mitigation plan and study in place, and we do out at Mid-America as well, so, and Lambert and everyone else. So yeah, it's something that's required and needed, and I think it's a, it's a very cost-effective.
The only question I have is, is it a new requirement, or have we been doing this for the downtown airport?
We have been doing it, but with this proposal, it's going to be actually less manpower, better service, and then, again, a lot of that responsibility with the permitting and some of the other compliance issues, it's actually going to be transferred to USDA. So it's overall, it's just a better product that we're going to be providing, and it's less cost.
The only other question I would have is, should something happen with wildlife, whether it's on, I don't know, the runway or whatever, who, if we enter into a contract like this, is the USDA, who has liability? It's still the airport?
We do. Yeah, we do, but again, the monitoring is better, and then they actually have more resources as far as what the response is and how we're going about doing that. And again, they've got, they're much more knowledgeable on this. So some of the wildlife challenges we have, you know, obviously, when we have that issue, we'll go and contract somebody to go and provide assistance. That's where USDA actually have the resources, and they're able to provide additional ones, both daytime and nighttime. So they're actually out there at night at times doing surveys and helping us with the mitigation.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that thorough analysis and the answer. I had no idea we did things like that, but it makes perfect sense. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is the Letter of Agreement between ByState Development and the Jerry Costello Group, and again, this is Mary Lamie.
All right, very good. So we are requesting the Operations Committee approval of a letter of agreement between ByState Development and the Jerry Costello Group for consulting services for the St. Louis Regional Freightway and ByState Development, with terms in effect beginning April 1, 2024 through March 31, 2026. The consultant entered into an initial letter of agreement with ByState Development in the summer of 2015. Following that initial contract, the consultant has continued to work for the Freightway and ByState Development under four additional contracts. The most recent contract covered the period of April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2024. The consultant provides strategic advice and planning for the Freightway and ByState Development. The consultant coordinates activities between the Freightway and the U.S. Secretary of Transportation and its office, as well as with members of U.S. Congress and other government officials in the St. Louis region. The consultant works with Class 1 railroads in the St. Louis region to identify strategies to fund Freightway infrastructure projects. Former Congressman Jerry Costello is the lead person for this contract. The proposed agreement provides these services at the same rate as the previous contract at $9,000 per month. The funding for this contract would be split between the Freightway's operating budget and ByState Development's executive services. We've also included a summary of accomplishments from the work that they've completed for this last contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So Mary, it's anticipated that Jerry Costello will still continue with the contract for two more years?
That is correct.
That he'll be the principal?
Yes. That is correct, if approved, yes.
I have no question, just comment that I find the former congressman very easy to reach when we need something, and my dealings with him is always professional, and not have one time where I've reached out to his office that he has not himself returned the call. So having that resource available to us, I think, is well worth it.
And we would echo those same comments.
Chair, if I can just comment very briefly.
Sure.
I would add that a former congressman's been really instrumental in actually some Missouri projects. The $196.3 million for the funding that we got through FTA for the new cars is also partly due to the Costello Group efforts, and also the former congressman was very instrumental in helping us with the flood relief money from, oh, I wish it were many more years ago, but in recovering from the flash flooding event in which we were able to secure some emergency funding from FTA. So whenever we ask Jerry to do something, he picks it up and gets it done. So would very much appreciate the Board's endorsement of the contract.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is, since we also have a contract on this side of the river, it would be great if we made sure that those two consulting groups, the two lobbying groups that we use at the federal level, really work closely together. So I would encourage that. I don't know if they do actively, but that's pretty critical.
It is. That's a very good point. Chair Winmiller, as a matter of fact, I had a Zoom meeting with HBS yesterday, and one of the team of HBS, Mr. Lawson, who has just given me a really good comparison memo on costs, which I will reference today when we get to budget, but he went, he was going to lunch with Jerry yesterday in some of that coordination. But that fundamental coordination between the groups so that we're all rowing the boat in the same direction is absolutely critical, and I found a lot of respect between the professionals that we have in this stable right now.
Yeah, and I would just echo, too, what Rose said. I mean, I don't, I don't see it as a Missouri team and an Illinois team. It's a ByState team, and, you know, there might be some things where some of the folks that are based out of Missouri can help with Illinois and vice versa, and that we're all on the same team and rowing in the same direction. So I would love to see that sort of cooperation, and I'm sure they're all professionals and good at what they do, that will be happening anyway, but just wanted to highlight that.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstention? I'm sorry, is there, was there an opposition? Oh, that was a late aye. Okay, got it. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next item is any unscheduled business?
I have none.
So we can move on to the operations report with Chuck Stewart.
All right. Thank you. So I want to, you know, our operations reports, our workforce updates, and our operations update is in your packet for the month of November. I would like to take this opportunity to update you on ridership, staffing, our January 15 service change, and a color right update. From a ridership standpoint, as previously reported, after our low period of ridership in fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22 and '23, we saw about 6% increases year-over-year in our system-wide ridership. However, in the current fiscal year, we are probably holding that pattern. We are probably level in our ridership, and I think that's, there are a couple of reasons for that. One reason, I think, is that at the beginning of '23, we had 586 operators. That was been the low point in terms of operators, and as a result, we reduced our service mainly frequencies and ending nights and weekends and that kind of thing, which has had an impact on our ridership. So that's, that's the bad news. The good news is that as of January 1, 2024, I now have over 624 bus operators, and as a result of that, we have been able to do service change in January, which is not normal. We usually do service changes. We did one in November. The next scheduled one would have been in March. We found ourselves with enough operators that had been hired toward the end of the year to implement a service change in January, and at that time, we were able to add service to 17 bus routes in St. Louis and St. Louis County. We added service to these routes. Eight routes increased frequency from 120 minutes, from 120 minutes to 60 minutes. Nine routes increased frequency from 60 minutes to 30 minutes, and there were some other changes. No changes to MetroLink, but this is, this is But this is, this is the process that we will be using to bring the system back, to rebuild the system. As we gain more operators, we will try to improve our frequencies and therefore our service to our customers, our reliability. This is really, really good news for us at this point. Our next scheduled service change again will be in March. At that time, we will probably again be in, trying to increase frequencies, reliability, service available within the, the the current pattern as it relates to, to bus routes that we are currently using. This current service model requires five hundred and ninety-two bus operators, as I stated. As of the beginning of the year at six twenty-four, that's more than the requirement, but it's not enough because, of course, you have absences and those kind of things. So, but we're getting there. We're getting to the point where we can stabilize this system, and we're looking forward to, as we continue this process, we continue to have hiring events, we're continuing to make offers, we continue to our five thousand dollar signing bonus, which will continue until the end of March. What we have found as we try to move forward in, in improving our service is that, you know, there are a lot of things that have to fit together. One of our needs now, of course, we still need a lot, we need a lot of Colorado ride operators, and we're increasing, intensifying our efforts to recruit Colorado ride operators. We also need a number of mechanics. Even though we have operators, you got to have buses. So we're, we're working on fitting all the resources together as we move forward and try to, to bring the system back. As we make additional changes going forward, we're going to be very transparent about that. We're going to bring, we're, we're going to engage our stakeholders as we move forward so that everyone will understand what we're trying to do and how we, how we will implement changes until we get to the point where maybe we can, can extend service. We're not to that point yet. From a Colorado ride perspective, I think each of our commissioners and our stakeholders and individuals who ride Colorado ride, we sent out an update, a performance update on Colorado ride, and that talked about the changes that we are making in terms of the telephone system to improve usability and reporting and give people better opportunities to book rides. We anticipate that that, those updates will be completed in mid-February. We are also working on our reservation software. We're looking at upgrading the software that we have, and we're considering RFPs for new proposals for software as we go forward. And that'll be an initiative that will take place during 2024. Don't have a specific end date on that, but we are working diligently to move forward with that. Our ADA consultant is also in place. He's begun reviewing data, policies, procedures, interviewing staff. He will be on-site in the coming week. He has met with, he's taken part in ADA customer advisory group meetings, so he is making himself available to the public, conducted a focus group and interviewed customers. The target date for his preliminary report is spring of 2024. And I think another element that is, that is very significant to our set, our success in recruiting and retaining Colorado ride operators, we are working on contract negotiations with ATU Local 788 for our Colorado ride operators. The contract expires January 31st. We've had meetings. We have made significant progress on that contract. Meetings will resume the first week in February. And I think that I'm hoping within the next sixty to ninety days, we'll have an agreement so that we can move forward and enhance the job experience for our Colorado ride operators as well and be able to recruit and retain additional operators. That concludes my overview of our operations, manpower, and operations reports. I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Mr. Stewart, quick question for you. You mentioned that six hundred and twenty-four operators are where you're at now, and that's an increase, but it's not enough, you mentioned. What would be the ideal number for you?
Well, we're, we're actually budgeted for six fifty for this year, but we've, in the past, 2020, we had over eight hundred and fifty operators. But, but, you know, as we bring back this system, as we focus on our needs for the future, we also need to be focusing on what metro is going to look like in the next five years, ten years, whatever. The pandemic changed things. It changed our ridership. It changed the riding patterns. We need to take all of those things into consideration as we move forward. We may never need eight hundred and fifty operators again, but we need to plan for what the requirements are in order to bring the service to the region that is, is expected and is, and is due, our customers. So, so it's kind of a moving target. Right now, we're trying to just get people on board so we have enough for the service, service pattern we have out there now. But as we get there, then we have to think about what the service of the future looks like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Chuck, I just wanted to offer my congratulations. This has been a really hard long haul. And I know you and your staff, and particularly the operators, are doing such a great job, and just wanted to commend you for that, and thank you for the thorough reports that we get at the Operations Committee level and also at the board level. And please let us know if there's anything we can do to be of assistance.
Well, thank you very much. You have been of great assistance. You've supported us in the incentives that we've offered in order to attract and retain. We have a great team here, here at ByState, the metro team. They're on it. I'm sure you saw what we dealt with on Monday with the, with the ICE situation. This team is, they're, they're always ready to face the challenges that are presented to us.
I want to just make a comment. I like the new commissioner already. She stole my question that I was going to ask Chuck, so that's good. Chuck, I do have another question. On all the incentives that we've done on trying to attract the employees, are we seeing the benefits? I mean, the retention, I know the sign-on bonuses. Can you kind of explain briefly, how does that work? I've had that question asked, you know, do I just come and sign on and I get the five thousand dollar sign-on bonus, or how does that work?
Hold up. That would, that would not work for us. It's basically a year-long process. So you sign on after you've completed training. You get, I don't know the exact details. Some of it, some of it, after six months, you get more. Then at the end of the one-year period, you get the balance. And it is working. It is working. I mean, that's, you know, one of our major problems. While we were focusing on hiring, we also had a retention problem. We had a retention problem as well. And basically with the new ATU contract for operators in general, those kind of things, mentorship programs, just enhanced touching, reaching out and touching our frontline employees and, and letting them know that they were part of the team. We need them to be with us and providing these incentives. So it is, is not only improved our ability to hire, but it's improved our ability to retain. For, until we started doing these things, we were losing fifteen operators a month on average. Now it's like three to five, so it's working. It is working.
Well, I just want to comment, I've been at a couple of the job fairs, and one of the things that really stuck out when I arrived was the professionalism that the staff showed. And I reported that to Mr. Roach, that it made you feel like you wanted to join the operation. And I think that's just kudos to the staff members that are out there trying to recruit those new. And I really get excited when I see something posted on social media, a new hire standing out there, having, holding up his paper that, you know, he's got a job. It, it's great. It's a, I think it just shows that we're trying everything we can, so kudos to you and the entire staff for that.
And thank the board for your support.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, let me just say thank you. Chuck, appreciate the, the update and look forward to the one at the board meeting. Is there a president or president report, Talby?
Yep, I will try to be brief, but you guys stole all my thunder. Let me just say that. But very, very helpful. So I had the pleasure of doing several safety awards this past week. I want to note, a ten-year operator Ricky Dance was in, gave him an op, an award for just being good at his job. We had a patron who fell underneath the bus, was feeling dizzy. And, you know, we put a lot of pressure on operators, and he used his mirrors successfully to be sure, and essentially save a life. Just be careful. Also, Andy Lober, who works on, on our rideaway maintenance team, he was out on New Year's Eve on checking on a SCADA alert, which is our electronic system. He went that extra mile, walked down the alignment just a bit, and found actually a physical crack in our rail. And these are the things that, actually, just to touch on, that Chair Simmons mentioned of being sure that we are valuing our frontline folks, that we are making those investments. Chuck's numbers that are showing improvement are those kind of investments. Commissioner Winmiller, you're always careful to ask, what can we do to support this effort? These months of successful recruiting has to do with investing in those frontline employees, including the bonus, not only for the new employees, but the bonus that is encased in the new three-year contract with our, with our current employees through 788. A great contract. Chuck and his team did a great job on that. But we have to move through the, these pressures. And, and I'm very happy and pleased to announce the return of service in those seventeen routes. But of course, as we're going to talk about in our next meeting, these investments have to be paid for. And so please remember that, that these investments are within, you know, what are our budget constraints? Being sure that we're vigilant about those constraints. Be sure that over a multi-year basis, it is reasonable and some, and we are living within the means of our, of our taxing authorities. And I assure you, we are doing that. But we need to also be sure, hey, how do we make these investments? We ask you as a board of commissioners to make those investments and to take action. I like to think that the staff and I are executing on that vision. But of course, we need your support. We need your partnership, and I want to thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to moving on to our next committee meeting, but we will be going over budget. So thank you for that, and that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Talby?
No questions. I have one quick comment. We just heard a lot of great news from Chuck and from Talby on how we're bringing back service, and it's something that this agency has fought to do for probably a couple of years. And I don't know how many agencies around the country are able to restore service right now like we are. I would just ask Talby to, to, to see if the communication staff too can make sure we're getting that good news out there. Because whenever we have bad news, folks, you know, don't have a hard time finding us and reporting on it as they should. But this is a very good news story, and I think we should be proactive about making sure, you know, through the means that we have, that the, the community knows that we are restoring service, that we are keeping our promise. Because this is a big thing, and it's a big thing for the agency, and I think the staff should know about it. And I think the, the community as a whole should know about it. We shouldn't be afraid to toot our own horn a little bit about this because this, this agency did a good job and kept its promise. So that was my, my comment. Let's, let's not be so humble. I think, I think this is great news. Thank you.
Good point. Anyone else? Then I'll turn to Myra for a call for future meeting dates.
Yes, Chair, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February 16th. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on March 7th. And the next Operations Committee and Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meetings will be held on March 22nd. All of the meetings will start at eight thirty a.m.
Thank you, Myra. I need a motion from the committee to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing confidential legal or privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1 Legal and D2 Real Estate. They have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Hi.
The motion passed.
All right, so you all in executive session.